Good evening, everybody. All right, Heidi, ready to go?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening. This is a meeting of the Township Committee, March 17th, 2025. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Esberry Park Press and the Two of her Times and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and filing with the Township Clerk on January 11th, 2025. Committeeman Clark, Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Heibel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you.
Heidi. Before we get started with today, with so many of our police officers and our firefighters in the room, I just wanted to take a moment. This weekend was an incredibly trying time for our first responders. And while they don't talk about it, they don't look for thanks or kudos, it was a difficult weekend where our first responders, police, fire, EMS, were all called into action. And I want all of them to know, and with all these people sitting here today, how much Middletown is grateful for your service each and every day, for your sacrifice. All five of our chiefs, volunteers, were at a structure fire that we had over the weekend, all five of them, with many companies responding early Saturday morning. Our police officers were standing by, offering their assistance. And I just want to say, on behalf of this governing body and on behalf of the residents of Middletown, I want to thank you very much for everything you do for this community. Thank you all very much. All right, Heidi. I've messed up your agenda enough already for the night, I think, right?
I know.
Okay.
We're actually going to go out of order on the agenda. We're going to-
Okay, I take back what I said then.
Yes, exactly. We are going to start with our presentations and proclamations. The presentation recognizing the Elks Lodge 2179 for winning the 2025 State Ritual Competition. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the Elks Lodge, please come to the front of the room.
Don, go around. I didn't think I jumped in the fence there. So, well, good evening, everybody. It is wonderful to have our Middletown Elks Lodge 2179 here tonight, celebrating the two big victories, one from last year, but even more recent, another championship this year. And the Middletown Elks Lodge 2179 will be representing the state of New Jersey on the national level for the ritual competition. And when we recognized in 2014, it was at the Elks Lodge with plenty of beer and food. So I found it appropriate to have them come to Town Hall on St. Patty's Day with no beer and no food. But before I turn it over to the team, Eddie, who's speaking on behalf of the team here? I know, I'm not, I did not tell them, by the way, that they were speaking, so surprise. Don, is this you? Eddie's in the, all right. So before I turn it over to them, we're really fortunate in town. And I was at their Ambassador Charity Ball Dinner last weekend, right? And I said it then, and I'll say it again today. Middletown is so grateful to have the Middletown Elks Lodge number 2179 here in town. They don't ask for, they ask for nothing. All they ask to do is how they can give back to their community. And when a little child needed a walker, and I brought this up at the meeting at the charity ball the other day, when a little child was in need of a walker because the parents couldn't afford it, the Middletown Elks Lodge was the one that went out and bought it. And now that child is running around their parent, his parents' house. But there was no request for a newspaper or a press release or anything like that. It was done out of kindness of their hearts and done out of dedication and love for Middletown. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Township Committee, on behalf of the residents of Middletown, everything you do from honoring our veterans to your yearly Flag Day ceremony, to our youth athletics, all of these things represent what it means to be an elf. I'm proud to be a member of the lodge, and I'm grateful to all of you that really make it happen behind the scenes. So a big round of applause for all of you.
Mayor Perry, Township Committee, thank you very much for this honor tonight and all the support that you do give us throughout the year, whether it's proclamations for us, our Youth Week, attending our breakfasts with the Hoopshoe winners and everything. We can't make this happen without the support of the Township Committee and the residents of Middletown. We're here to help you. Anything you possibly need, if we can do it, we'll be there for you. We've been here for 65 years, and hopefully we're here for 65. So, but once again, thank you, Mayor. The Township Committee, thank you. We appreciate this.
All right. So, on behalf of the Township Committee, the Township of Middletown congratulates Middletown Elks Lodge 2179 on winning first place in the 2024 and 2025 State Ritual Competition. Congratulations to you and your fellow officers on becoming back-to-back state champions. The Middletown Elks Lodge 2179 is a fundamental organization within the Bay Shore area that truly emphasizes the importance of brotherhood and helping others. We are so grateful and commend you for always preserving your lodge's history, especially through this competition while simultaneously building upon its future. We're proud of you. Lots of luck at the National Ritual Championship. Good luck, guys. Thank you. Don't leave yet, don't leave yet. Perry's gonna yell again. Eddie, Eddie.
These guys don't listen.
Come on back, come on back. I may not be the exalted ruler, but yeah. But, all right, ready? Squeeze in?
Everyone ready?
All right, Raven.
Yep.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
He's still in three feet.
Okay, next on our agenda, we're going to have the presentation recognizing Middletown High School North Boys and Girls Basketball Teams for winning 2025 Shore B Coastal Division Championships. I'd like to invite both teams to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry.
Let's roll out those banners. Let's give it up for our champs. Felt like it was okay to do boys and girls together because it was both from North, and we didn't want to have North and South sitting up here side by side. That was a no-no. But I want to offer this. First of all, congratulations. On behalf of the Township Committee, want to congratulate you on a great season, on a championship season. And we've been saying it quite frequently here because we've been blessed in Middletown to have a lot of champions in our athletics over the last few years in particular. But you've now added your names not only to that list, but to that banner that will forever hang. And, okay, I love it. I got three kids at home, happens to be all that. The, what you have all done is learned a couple of valuable lessons because while you see your individual names on these banners, you did not succeed because of your single name on that banner. You are champions today because of each of you playing a crucial role in your team's success. So while you represented Middletown and you represented the name on your jersey, realize that you're representing the community, you're representing Middletown, you're representing High School North, and you're representing now what it means to be a champion. So congratulations to both of you. I'm going to have our coaches speak if they're okay with that in a minute. But, see, I didn't surprise the elves. But I just want to say, on behalf of the Township Committee, this is only, this is the start of, while it's a championship, it's a start of day two. Day two is about next year and next season. So realize that this is a starting point, not an end. Capitalize on this. For the seniors, whatever you choose to do, I hope you'll continue to learn from the lessons that you did during this time. And to everybody else that is, hopefully, pick it back up next season, keep it going, and bring back that championship again next year, all right?
I think Coach Hocken's going to speak for-
Speak for everybody. Wow. Now, now you know what a mayor is like. Right, Ricky?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry, I think it's truly fitting for me to talk about both teams because the five seniors that are on the girls' team, I was one of their coaches their freshman year. The head coach, Lauren Bowler, is out of the country right now. So I think-
Terrible excuse.
But committee members, Mr. Perry, thank you for having us here tonight. On behalf of the Middletown North Administration, our Board of Ed, I know one of our board members, Ms. Minnie Wiesens, is here tonight. Thank you for coming. When we see her at events, you know, these kids do realize when you're there, so thank you. It was a confusing year for these guys, but they persevered through a lot of stuff. Both teams had 17 wins, both teams won a division. I think the girls were undefeated. No, we had one loss. And the more important thing about both of these teams is how they get along and how they stay together with each other through tough times. And both teams did have some tough times this year, but they kind of got through it. And by the end of the year, we're playing meaningful basketball games again. That hasn't gone on here for a while. So thank you, guys. Girls who I coached, girls who I worked with in the summer, I'm honored to say that I got to know you. Hopefully, like Mr. Perry said, this is just the beginning. You know, both teams want to come back and see you here next year, so thank you, sir.
Let's stick with that. All right, well, the Township of Middletown congratulates Middletown High School North Basketball for winning both, for boys and girls, for winning the 2025 Shore B Coastal Division Championship. Congratulations on your win, on your division championship and going undefeated. And guys, I guess, one loss, right? You got to hold that over their head. Despite the challenges that came your way, you continued, like Coach said, to persevere through your hard work and determination, and this is an incredible accomplishment. We're so proud of you for representing Middletown, for representing Middletown North, working with your teammates, and getting the job done in achieving this championship. We're sure that you'll continue to do great things in the future, and wish you all the success. Congratulations to both of you. Let's give it up. All right, Raven. How are we looking, Raven?
I think I got everyone. All right. One, two, three. If you want to stay like that as your parents, whatever you got.
All right, you don't, hang on. Guys, scooch over a little bit. Get out of the picture and let the ladies take their picture real quick as a team. All right. There we go.
One, two, three.
Let's give it up for our girls back. I pledge. Coach, congratulations. Some of the few times I'm shorter than people.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
All right, let's give it up for our boys.
No. Oh.
You want me to say? Awesome.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the Administration of Oath of Office. We're going to begin with a promotion to Sergeant for Ricardo Cruz. If you'd like, please come forward with your family.
Detective Cruz is before he gets-
It's in line with sergeant.
What do you think, guys? Two? Two years old, he's stuck in his shirt.
Only handle three, Eric.
Listen, Rick and I were like going back and forth for a little while. All right, come hang on a sec. Shoot down his middle. Yeah, yeah. Ricky's here. No, no, look, you're perfect. Jeez, Al, nervous. All right, Rick, ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Hold it up a little bit. There you go, perfect. I, Ricardo Cruz.
I, Ricardo Cruz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of.
All of the duties of.
Middletown Police Sergeant.
Middletown Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God. Congratulations. I advise the kids to keep lowering the body weight.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
The always police family, we have a police team. What kind of- I'll do some very deep aroma.
At this time, we have the Administration of Oath of Office for Officer Robert Poss. Please come forward with your family.
All right. I, Robert Poss.
I, Robert Poss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of Middletown Police Officer.
Of Middletown Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, man.
We'll do a good one, then we'll do-
Raven?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jeff. So these traditions. What batch of machine? Four nineteen. Bad.
One, two, three. Awesome. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to invite Officer Nicholas Missara to please come forward with your family.
Good job. Awesome, awesome. All right, ready? Here we go.
I, Nicholas Missara.
I, Nicholas Missara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith.
I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance. To the same. And to the governments established.
The governments established.
In the United States. And in this state. Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
Faithfully.
Impartially. And justly perform. All the duties.
All the duties.
Of Middletown Police Officer. According to the best of my ability. So help you God. Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know who actually work in this officer is. Or his son. I gave you the second. It's only. Come with a SAG card and we'll talk about something else.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
What's that? Would say he first. Sorry. Oh, oh. All right, I promise it's the last time I'm gonna answer this smile, okay? Yeah.
All right. One, two, three. Perfect.
I'm just glad to know that I'm not the only one. All right, let's give it up for our new police officer. Hey, Rick. Guy becomes a sergeant all of a sudden, so you. That's a waiting guy all of a sudden. Uh, I just wanna, I just wanna take a minute and, uh, once again, thank our police officers that are, that are here tonight. I wanna thank our deputy chiefs, uh, and in particular, I wanna thank our chief, uh, for his steadfast leadership, uh, continuing to invest in our police department. I know Colleen's not here tonight, we're working on the budget, uh, but I wanna thank, uh, all of our police officers, our new police officers. I wanna congratulate Rick Cruz, uh, who I think is our token Phillies fan on the police department. But, uh. He might be arrested on his way out. Uh, but I, I, I just wanna, once again, um, thank the chief, thank the deputy chiefs, and thank our officers for everything that they do. Chief, thanks, uh, always for your support, your leadership in our community, um, from you and all the way down through the ranks. It's, uh, much appreciated and we're grateful for, for all that you do for our community, so thank you, chief.
Bye, thank the mayor, deputy mayor of the committee, township administration for always supporting the police department. Tremendous hires tonight, all two modern day graduates. Transferred from other police departments to Monmouth County, had a significant cut in pay to come work in Middletown. Uh, a lot of experience, uh, very seasoned veteran K-9 officer and a crime scene detective, so we're very fortunate to have him on so rings. And Sergeant Cruz, uh, probably one of the most honorable people, I hope three words I've worked with, my prayer. All three of them come from police families in the fire department, uh, New York, Port Authority, Middletown, uh, so. Perfect night for the department, very, very great, thank you.
All right, let's give it up. I'm gonna walk slow back to the dais, so if you would like.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, at this time, we have the approval of minutes for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting and the March third, twenty twenty-five workshop meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman, uh, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt minutes. At this time, we have the public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three four five seven. An ordinance of the township of Middletown in the county of Monmouth in the state of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter four sixty-five, section four sixty-five dash ninety-six of the general code of the township of Middletown for parking restrictions on Sunnyside Road.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four five seven. Sunnyside Road. Okay, seeing no members of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have a consent agenda, which will include resolutions one twenty, twenty-five dash one twenty-five through, um, twenty-five dash one forty, including firefighter applications, but removing twenty-five dash one thirty-six for a separate vote.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-six, a resolution authorizing first amended shared services agreement with the Borough of Keyport for municipal court services to include prosecutor and public defender services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Recuse.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance, I mean, excuse me, to adopt resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-six. At this time, we have Township Committee acting as the ABC issuing authority. We have twenty-five dash one forty-one, a resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer for expansion of premises for licensed one three three one dash three three dash zero zero two, Davino Group LLC, trading as Portside Bar and Liquors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to, um, adopt resolution twenty-five dash one forty-one. We have Township Committee comments.
All right, Committeeman Sedembrino.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few comments. When the, when the Elks were up here before, I was afraid to ask the question, I was wondering if you asked the question.
Okay.
They were recognized for winning the twenty twenty-five state ritual competition.
Yes.
Do you know what that was?
Uh, it is.
Be concerned about that?
Uh, you should be concerned, I think, Kev. Uh, no, um, the, uh, state ritual is, you know, when I went and visited with them, this ritual is the proceedings on how, uh, a new member comes into the lodge. And, uh, it is a very rehearsed, um, and coordinated effort. And for them to now, in back-to-back years, uh, beat every other municipal, um, and Elks Lodge in the state of New Jersey, uh, is very impressive. Um, so it's, uh, it's not the kind of ritual that you see in, uh, like Indiana Jones, but it's, uh.
Once or twice before and I, and I.
Yeah.
Appreciate you explaining that, but thank you.
Yeah. So you don't have, you have nothing to worry about ten, no. No Township Committee member sacrifices here tonight.
Well, thank, well, thank you, Mayor. Um, so that's, uh, that's. I think, I think our deputy mayor was concerned.
Yeah, I, well, I didn't say that there wasn't a deputy mayor sacrifice, you know?
Once, once again, it puts Middletown on the map, uh, through the, um, through the time spent from, um, from all of the Elks Lodge, uh, to make Middletown look certainly great. Um, and with regard to the, um, the north boys and girls basketball teams, I was, uh, telling Ted as the teams came up, if you weren't paying attention, attention and you didn't know what, whether they were basketball or wrestling, you just need to take a look at the, were they tall or were they a little on the short side? So, you know, we can only see the backs and saying, okay, that's, that must be the basketball team, and you got pretty tall boys and girls here, which is fantastic, but, uh, great representation of, uh, Middletown as well. Um, that's all I'll have for this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Committeewoman Kratz.
Thank you, Mayor, so again, just, um, in the beginning of the evening, Mayor, I had acknowledged all of our first responders, especially our fire department and to all of our chiefs, thank you, my personal thanks for your efforts over this weekend, it was a tough one, and, and we thank you, all of you. Um, also, my congratulations to our officers, I have had the privilege to work for many years with, uh, Detective Cruz, who is now Sergeant Cruz, so I am pleased, he is one of our finest, and he is a dedicated officer. I work with him extensively with our young people, and he has proven himself to be just such a valuable, valuable officer, and we're, I'm thrilled for him, truly thrilled, so congratulations to him and to our new, two new officers also. It's, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful evening for Middletown when you hear all of this good stuff and these officers who both attended Modern Day, which I thought was great too, so, good stuff, and, and congratulations to our athletes. It has been a year for our athletes, it's, we have had several meetings, um, as of late, especially this year, where we get to celebrate our student athletes, and it's always, always quite fun and always great to have them here, so, certainly a testament to how, how athletic Middletown has become. So, congratulations to all of our athletes and happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
You were gonna say that, I did.
All he wanted was happy St. Patrick's.
You and I are the only ones without green.
And I'm Kelly. I'm, I'm.
No green.
I'm the only person wearing green, uh, and, yeah, Kat, well, Kev's got it.
Kat's got some green too. This is my green here tonight, so. Uh, congratulations to the new officers, uh, it's truly, uh, it means a lot when they, when I just found out that they left other towns to come work for Middletown, we know we are the best, so, uh, that means a lot to see them actually, uh, coming aboard here, so, much appreciated. Officer Cruz, I, I'm missing the chief, is, if he's still here, I'm, I was, my kids are definitely gonna be extremely worried if he's not in our classroom, is that what's gonna happen here, he's gonna be out of the classroom now? Oh, boy, all right, my, uh, my two girls, uh, St. Mary's, love him coming in there all the time.
Back into modem?
Yeah, I, I think we gotta talk about that, I don't know what's gonna happen there.
You tell his wife, all right?
I will tell his wife. Uh, I don't know, we have these young kids here, but they're doing some serious filming tonight, you guys picked a good meeting, so thanks for coming, uh, to our fire department, our chiefs, uh, you guys always first-class job, uh, um, some tough days, uh, or tough day that you had, tough days ahead, so just, uh, we're thinking about you up here, um, if you need something, please don't hesitate to call. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
Great job, Brick, bringing up the St. Patrick's Day, yeah, you really felt the spirit. Uh, can, can one of you just tell me what you're here for? Great. And tell me your name? Okay, Rick, get off the dais, she's coming up here. All right, well, welcome and thank you for, for being here today, it's, uh, great to see young people, especially high school students, so, great job with that explanation too, um, you know? Go talk to her, right? Go talk to her.
I want you to ask the mayor.
She stepped right up.
I, I, I. I mean, I was kinda looking in her direction, but it was, it was boom, right away, I love it.
Wasn't rehearsed, right?
No. I love it, I love it. I love it, yeah, seriously. Um, all right, uh, once again, um, I, I, I seriously just wanna thank all the first responders, 'cause every single one of them, um, that's here tonight, um, was over there, Jimmy, the chiefs, um, you know, and. As hard as it was to be there, right? Walking around the back and, and seeing the, the, the sheer force of that fire. Walking around the back and, and seeing the, the sheer force of that fire. But seeing our, our five chiefs and all of our firefighters, I, I mean, it was, it was really unbelievable. And I'm, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be on the scene because it is, it's great for somebody like me that, you know, I can, I can sit in meetings with all of you and talk to you about what investments we wanna make and, and what things we wanna buy and, and what changes we wanna do. But to see it in action is, is, and it's not my first structure fire, but it is certainly one that, you know, I'll remember. And, and I just, I really wanna give kudos to, to all the chiefs for the absolute in sync nature of that entire operation, I thought was amongst all of you, amongst the firefighters that were there, the different companies that were there. And, and aside from Kevin's left-handed chicken scratch on the board as to where coordinating everybody, I, I don't, I didn't see, I didn't see one thing that didn't make sense to me. So chiefs, you deserve a lot of credit. You know, Jimmy, I see you, former chief, you know, was working that air unit. Seriously, guys, thank you. It means a lot, means a lot to know that at six o'clock on a Saturday morning, in a blink of an eye, you had. I, I don't know, I'm sure you can tell me how many volunteers were there? Sixty-two people got up on Saturday morning at six o'clock and ran into a burning building. If that doesn't deserve a round of applause, I don't know what does. So, and, and to see the ladies auxiliary there that was there with coffee and donuts and water and snacks to keep everybody going because it was a long scene. I was only there for, I don't know, hour and a half maybe? But guys, you know, on behalf of everybody up here, take it back to, to the respective companies that responded and to those sixty-two individuals and thank them each for us, all right? So, all right, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. Ask that you state your name for the record and that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, ma'am? She, Joe's gonna bring up the microphone for you.
See? Rick, she, she has her St. Patrick's Day scarf on. Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan McKytis. I live at 63 Pape Drive in the Navy Seating Section of Middletown. I came before you two weeks ago regarding the Superfund Act and I'm hoping that you will consider it going forward, perhaps at your next meeting by resolution. I know you had a packed agenda tonight and congratulations to all of the, the folks who were recognized tonight. So I just wanted to just bring that up again. And if there's anything, any information, further information that you need, please don't hesitate. I think you have my number. I know Heidi does.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Don, come on down. Don, good to have you back. There you go. It was like three meetings in a row. Rick was gonna get, Rick was getting worried. He's gonna do a wellness check.
He was gonna knock my house down. He said, I don't get him back. Anyway, my name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive and it's been so long, I forget what I needed to ask.
I'm Tony, this is Rick.
Tony, I thought Tony was sitting over there.
Yeah, we're opening up a pizza joint after this.
I got a question for Ted though. We've been talking for a couple of years now about the section of Main Street in Port Monmouth that's not paved yet. I mean, the whole street's been paved except for that one section where somebody dug it up.
It's still on our list, we, you know, we look at all the roads every year and we prioritize them.
On the list to ignore it?
No, we're, it's on the list to be, to be considered for that. It's, you know, there are other roads unfortunately that are in worse shape. So it's still on there and, you know, we're gonna check with utility companies to see if they're gonna be doing any work over there.
Okay.
So they can pave it instead of us, but for now, we're about to.
Yes, some utility dug it up. They should be paving it.
Well, they did recently.
Well, they did, this is, this is, I believe, Ted, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe this is exactly why we changed that ordinance five years ago, probably at this point.
This is a section of that road that hasn't been paved.
Correct.
From Palmer Avenue to the highway.
But, but the, or the old ordinance, the reason that we changed the ordinance was if, I believe if they came within.
Yeah.
With 500.
500 feet of an intersection, they had to go completely through the intersection. It used to be, you only had to go curb to curb for the distance of, of what you dug up. So, so that, this is exactly why we changed that ordinance, this, this exact roadway.
And when was that changed?
I, I don't know, how many? Four?
After.
Four or five years? Yeah.
Don, you're saying it's recently ripped up?
No.
Okay.
It's been like this as long as I can remember. I don't drive that road.
Went up to the intersection and then stopped. It's like, it's like how the state did King's Highway.
It goes from like, what's it? The, um.
It's like Murphy.
Street by Thorne, Murphy.
Murphy Road.
From Murphy to like Crystal Pond.
Right.
That whole section. And there's like one swatch going down the whole length of the road that's been dug up and repaved and people keep asking me, when they gonna pave that road? And so, come in and ask them, you know? How come I got to be the one to ask them all the time? Anyway, um, there was something else too. Can I come back?
Sure.
Next meeting?
Next meeting, April 7th, come on back.
I might be here.
All right, all right.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
You got it. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Or does everybody wanna get to the closest Irish pub you can? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward. None of you wanna get up here? Okay. Come on down, come on, come on, challenge accepted. I love it. Okay. Now, your one classmate gave a very, very good introduction, so fire away. Tell me your name first.
Hi, my name is David Villacoba. And I was just, just a question, I was looking at the agenda and I saw a lot of stuff to do with the purchase of trucks. And I was just wondering why, like for what purpose are they going to be used?
So, so these, these trucks will actually be for Ted's crew down at the end here for our Public Works team. So rotating out some of the trucks that are in really bad condition and certainly need upgrades and purchasing those trucks, putting the, the trucks that we currently have into different services that aren't going to, aren't going to get beat up quite as much, but will certainly serve Ted's crews well.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? All right, give him a round of applause for asking a question over there. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committee woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you all very much.